I'd like to welcome you to the Montpelier Rotary, The Bridge Forum for Council Candidates in Montpelier. We have about an hour and a quarter today to go over some important issues and we're going to get right at it. First, I'd like to introduce the Editor-in-Chief of The Bridge, who is our moderator today. And I want to be sure to mention that she is the sole repository of the questions for today, Cassandra Hemonway. And we have a timer, Donna Bate, former council member and a noted public speaker and teacher of public speaking in the area. My name is Bill Miles. I'm the immediate past president of Rotary Club and was called into action for this, for this event. The person who normally handles this, I'll have a moment of sorrow, is in Hawaii. So he wasn't able to make it today, Joshua Kent. Montpelier Rotary is a branch of Rotary International. There are 1,800,000 members of Rotary in the world in 186 countries. And Montpelier Rotary has been active now for 100 years, a little over 100 years in Montpelier. And we have two projects that we do locally that are important to us. We have a bag of food that we put in about 85 kids' backpacks once a week. That'll total about 2,500 bags of those for the year. And we also help with a coat drive in the fall, which used to be run by the Kitzmiller's. I mentioned that because Cassandra approached Rotary a couple of years ago and said, "We probably need a council forum to have potential counselors get an opportunity to present themselves and talk about the issues of the day." I'm going to just spend a second to say that we have a sort of a five-part agenda today. Shortly, the candidates will get a chance to introduce themselves. And then we're going to go to a round robin. Round robins can be kind of funny because if people speak consecutively, they have a tendency to, you know, to go with the flow. So Cassandra's going to bounce around on to the candidates and with the questions. So it'll be, you know, a little more interactive and a little faster. The candidates know the time they've been given. They each have generally 90 seconds for a response. If during the round robin, something comes up that appears to be, that it needs a rebuttal of some type, we could go back for a rebuttal if necessary. Following the round robin, we're going to go to a District Two candidate-to-candidate discussion in which the candidates themselves may originate or initiate questions to each other. You are the only ones this year that are running against each other. So we thought we'd try to focus in and give you an opportunity to speak to each other and about some of the issues that might, you might have differences or agreements on. And we'll go from there to a new section of the, we're going to try out called the Deeper Dive. We have some, some important issues that we need to talk about. And if as they come up during the discussion, we'll make note of them. Both Cassandra and I will and Ed will. And if we want to come back to those topics, then we'll go into the deeper dive and go to people and go to topics and go a little bit harder at that. And then following that, it will give candidates a chance to wrap up. I want to mention at this point, before we get started, that Palin's on a tight time schedule. We recognize that, want to work with that. And if some of our, our people in the audience have a question for Palin, please get it to Ed or to me and we will get it to Cassandra so that she can take care of it and get Palin in with any questions that are specific to her prior to the audience participation, which comes after the, the deep dive. So it'll go deep dive, audience participation as necessary or desired, and then candidate wrap up. And you've got your, you've been informed of what the time schedule is and what the agenda is. And I think we're all set with that. Cassandra, are we all, are we all set otherwise?
All set, ready to begin.
Great. Thank you for doing this again.
Absolutely. Thank you, Bill, and thank you to the Rotary Club and Orca Media. I'm going to be very brief. Welcome to the 2025 Candidate Forum for City Council. I'm Cassandra Hemonway, the editor of The Bridge. I'm going to jump right into it because I think Bill introduced the format well. I do want to acknowledge one thing before we begin, that we have partnered with the Rotary Club. We do have a Rotarian who is a candidate, Mark Gwynn. Mark has stepped away from any organizing of the event from Rotary Club perspective. And no, none of the candidates have seen the questions I'm about to ask, except one which they all had a chance to answer in writing in The Bridge. So without any further ado, I will start by giving the candidates a chance to introduce themselves. We'll go in order, alphabetical order by last name. And then we'll shake things up and change the order around as we go through questions. So we'll start with Ben. Ben is running for the seat in District One.
Great. Well, thank you so much. I first just want to start by just acknowledging the other folks that are stepping up for public service. I just really appreciate you doing that and your leadership. And I also want to thank the Rotary and The Bridge for hosting this event today. So I thought I might just briefly speak about why I'm running and what I think I can offer. And why I'm running is easy. I love this city. I love it. You know, I grew up in the Northeast Kingdom. I know Vermont really well. I get to work in lots of places across the state for my job, but there's no place I'd rather call home. You know, my three kids were born here. They're going to bury me in the backyard. I think this community has so much to offer and so much potential. And I really want to be a positive champion for this place and help it be all that it can be. You know, I, I work as a practitioner of community and economic development. That's been my life's work. Formerly at USCA Rural Development as Assistant State Director and now as President of the Preservation Trust of Vermont. In that role, I help communities identify their goals, their aspirations, and then connect them to resources to help make those dreams come true. You know, it's all about local leadership. And I feel like we have a lot of leadership in this community. It just needs to be harnessed really well. I can say that what I know about community and economic development is that the communities in Vermont that are thriving have two things in common: collaborative visionary leadership and relentless optimism. I'm going to try and bring both of those to the seat of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. And I also want to acknowledge, I neglected to mention your last name, Ben Doyle. Thank you. Mark Gwynn, he is one of two candidates for the District Two seat.
Yes. Thank you to the Rotary Club and thank you Cassandra for doing this. Thank you for everybody who's willing to serve, as Ben has said. And thank you for everyone who has been serving up to this point. I've moved my family here about three years ago. And in that short time, I mean, we've always been very community-minded folks. Immediately got involved with the Rotary Club. But something happened about a year and a half ago when the town flooded. And that just sort of jumped my involvement in town into a kind of overdrive. I went to the three forums that, that the Montpelier Foundation and the city and Montpelier Alive put up. Immediately afterwards, I began going to Montpelier Alive meetings every week just to try to find what could be done. It became clear to me at that time that there was so much that's right in this town. With all the reasons that we moved here, it's a beautiful place. It's centrally located in Vermont and the community of people here are the way that we are. We are community-minded people. And there were things that needed to be done that weren't necessarily being done with the kind of haste and immediacy. And so what do you do in that situation? Well, you can complain or you can find partners and work together and just get things done. And so through my work with the Commission and with Montpelier Alive, that's exactly what we've been doing for the past year and a half. And there are so many opportunities available to us right now at this time that this seems the time to be running to be part of City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Candidates, I turned my bell off because I realized my, I could get, you would hear my phone ringing. And I couldn't turn off, so I'm just doing the signs. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
And for, for people who are watching this on Orca Media, Donna Bate is timing our candidates who each have a minute and a half to answer these questions. Palin Khan is also running for District Two and is the incumbent candidate who has been serving as our District Two Counselor.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone again, like Orca Media, Rotary and Montpelier Bridge organizing this. I've attended when I was running for my first term and I have a different hair color. Now I have more whites, serving at the city council. So that's the physical effect. And I moved here in 2017 from Turkey. Now we call it Turkey. And because my husband is American, I thought like, yeah, I can do it. I've been visited the United States. I know what to do. But first year was really difficult for my kids who were in fourth and sixth grade. All the feeling of being external, like a foreigner for me, who was very successful at Turkey, having her own company and just like giving classes at the higher education level, coming here and just like I lost my identity. I had to start from scratch, 40 years old, building my own community and my professional network. And why I want to served on the city council, because Montpelier gave me a lot of things, like a new home, so that's I want to give back. And for last two years, being one and only diverse city council member, I am trying to be voice of groups who are underrepresented, women, youth, immigrants, immigrant women.
Thank you, Palin. Thank you. Finally, we have Jim Sheridan, who is running for the seat in District Three.
I'm Jim Sheridan. I'm a fourth generation Montpelierite, eighth generation Vermonter. I have not always lived in Montpelier, but I've either always lived in Montpelier or worked in Montpelier. And I've always lived within 25 miles. I actually lived in Duxbury for 12 years and was two years a selectman there where I cut my political teeth. I spent 12 years being a Montpelier City Counselor from 1999 to 2011. Enjoyed the experience, but didn't feel I should be a full-time politician. Realized it was time to get off for a while. I'm in my life being single now, retired. I'm actually disabled. It's physical disabilities, not a mental disability. I've been declared disabled for 20 years now. And I have the time now. I was looking for a purpose in life. I saw Tim was retiring. I wouldn't have run against him. So I decided that this is going to be my purpose.
Thank you, Jim. That's time. Oh, I'm so sorry. Keep going.
So because I didn't have to campaign, I have spent this month trying to catch up on the issues, current issues. I know about the old time issues. They were always there before my time. I wanted to learn about the new ones. I've watched lots of Zoom meetings of committees. And I'm happy to be back.
Thank you, Jim. I apologize for interrupting.
It's okay. It's okay.
All right. Let's get down to the questions. We're going to start with what has been the, the hot topic in town in the last couple of weeks. The current city council recently voted to terminate or not renew the city manager's contract. He is expected to finish his time in the role at the end of June. How do you think the city should move forward in filling that role? And we'll start with Mark.
Thank you for the question. I think that is the most important and urgent question for us now. Who we find obviously is going to be hugely important. But how we go about conducting that search is going to matter potentially even more. We are, whether we're doing it intentionally or not, we are already sending messages out to that future candidate, to other people who may choose one day to live here, to work here, to come here and call this their home, about what kind of place this is. Is Montpelier the kind of city that has the backs of its city staff? Is it a collaborative environment? Is it a, this is a tremendous opportunity for the right person to have a really meaningful and lasting impact on a capital city. And we need to present that image out to the world for not only the candidate, but for everyone in the world to see what a great place Montpelier is to be.
Thank you. Helen.
I said this in our last meeting, but I just want to repeat, I want to thank Bill for his service and commitment to Montpelier. I believe that the time we are in can provide some opportunities for us as a community. So we already have been kind of thinking what we can do as a city council to help. So we have a proposal for a public. So we already have been kind of thinking what we can do as a City Council to help. So we have a proposal for a public. And then for me, public input is the first step to gather what kind of skills and composite and like experience they want to see in the new city manager. And after that, hiring a professional team, research firm or HR consultant, then bringing all the stakeholders together, creating a recruitment committee and have this process inclusive as much as we could. Because this new city manager will be part of our family, will be part of Montpelier. And I think it will give us a great opportunity to see what we want to see in our city in the future. So let's think about future oriented and forward thinking and get together and find someone who can work with us.
Thank you, Palin. Jim?
Well, I'm excited to be part of the looking for a new city manager. What I hope to bring as part of that team is the experience of working 12 years with a city manager. And of course, Bill was obviously the city manager my entire 12 years. I think he was here four years before I was on the council. So I want to be, get somebody that has passion, has vision, and wants to work with the council to move the city forward. We're in the, I can say we're in far tougher times than whenever I was on the council. So this is going to be a very important decision for us to make. And I just want to be part of the team where I can kind of answer, well, this is what I know what we should look for in a city council manager because I spent so much time on the City Council, working with one. And so I think it's kind of tough to be thrown into the fire right away, making a big important decision like this. But I do feel like my experience will be a help and the guiding factor. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Ben?
Yeah, well, first I'd like to just say I want to acknowledge Bill's almost 30 years of leadership of the city as city manager. You know, he really clearly has a commitment to this community and has done a lot of good work and should be respected for that. You know, one of the things I'm good at is knowing what I don't know. I've never hired a city manager before. The city of Montpelier hasn't done it for 30 years. What I think we really need to do is do our homework and do it really well. And we're lucky in that there are resources across the state that we can access to help us make sure that we get this right. You know, whether that's the League of Cities in Towns or other communities that have done it well, whether it's Winuski or South Burlington. Barry has had what by all accounts seems to be a successful city manager search. So I think there are people that we can learn from and we should have a really thoughtful process that is, you know, does engage the community, but follows best practices. And, you know, I just want to acknowledge, I think what Mark said is that, you know, we're all involved in this hiring process, right? When that capable city manager in Oregon right now Googles Montpelier because she's thinking about coming here and bringing her skills, what is she going to see, right? The tone of our community dialogue is going to be the most important thing we can do to attract someone to want to work here and bring their skills. And I think we all need to remember that and reflect that in, in our community conversations.
Thank you. Okay, next question is about the proposed local option tax that's on the ballot for Town Meeting Day on March 4th. If the local 1% sales tax passes on Town Meeting, on the Town Meeting ballot, Montpelier could receive as much as $600,000 from the tax in fiscal year 2026. The council has already decided it will direct $50,000 of that to Montpelier Alive and the next $100,000 to infrastructure in the city. How would you propose to use the remaining $450,000 in potential revenue? And we'll start with Palin.
Yeah, thank you for the questions. So we've already discussing as like a city counselors and we propose a couple ideas, options. And also, just like this Saturday in our District Two monthly listening session, we receive other alternatives from our district residents. And I think it is important to use the rest of the money in different places, not like use whole of it in the one bucket. So that's why while we are voting for that item for the ballot, I mentioned that I want to see some commitment to other services. We couldn't include this year budget like American Corps, right? Or Green Mountain Transportation or Homelessness Tax Force, Social Justice Economy and like Advisory Committee. So we have, I think, good amount of different places we can allocate this money. And also maybe put some of it to our reserve funds because it is really low than it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Palin. Jim?
I'm fine with the two council choices. I'm not going to step in and say, hey, I think you made it wrong. But I'm going to tell you right now, $100,000 is not going to go very far in infrastructure. And what infrastructure are they talking? Is it just going to be streets? Is it going to be water sewer? Is it going to be something else? And so I would be very interested in determining, you know, first of all, what is going to be the infrastructure part? I think it probably should be higher. I'd like to see an equal amount go to the streets and an equal amount go to water sewer. I think something, and I just came from a meeting with this and it's something that I'm going to be offering to be a direct liaison to the senior center. 40% of the people in this city, above 40% are eligible for the senior center. I think that's higher than the kids we have in school. I'd like to see some of the money directed to that. But mostly I think it should be directed to the core values that we need to really establish it. And, and that's going to be Public Works, going to be Fire and Police. And so I'm, I'm interested in the conversation with the rest of the council about that money.
Thank you, Jim. Ben?
Uh, thank you. Well, I, I think the truth is we have now what looks to be a pretty significant unbudgeted expense in the severance package for the city manager. I'm assuming that that's going to be drawn from reserves. So I think we really need to replenish the reserves through the local option tax. But long-term, what's the plan for that? I think it would be a real tragedy for us to have a local option tax and then have it just be kind of water in the sand to a bunch of different things as opposed to really focusing on our priorities. For me, that's water infrastructure. I think that, you know, every time there's a water main break, it takes money away from what could have been invested in a proactive strategy to address our challenges in that area. So I would really like to see revenue from the local option tax. I absolutely think Montpelier Alive, but also when there's leftover, I think of directing it towards water infrastructure. The other thing that I would say is, you know, on the local option tax, the state of Vermont takes 30% right off the top. I think as a municipality, we could band together with other municipalities and suggest to the state that maybe if, for example, you've had a federally declared national disaster in your natural disaster in your municipality in the past five years, you get a five-year holiday on the state taking 30% off the top, provided that money goes back into resilience projects to help us be more sustainable for the long term. So I think there's some creative things we can do, but I think we need to be really intentional about it.
Thank you. Mark?
So first, let's point out that this came onto the ballot pretty late and a lot of it was in response to the need to cut from the budget and the need to raise more revenue. So for us to be finding new ways to spend this money that has not yet materialized is at least partially, I don't want to say wishful thinking, but there's already a deficit that needs to be filled. Having said that, it is important that we don't just use whatever money we get there to try and backfill the pieces of the budget that were cut out. The downtown business owners are the ones that are going to be responsible for collecting a large proportion of this tax. And I know that they feel very much left out of the conversation. In talking with them, they are not necessarily as a group all opposed or all for it. But by and large, there is a sense that they weren't part of the conversation. They really crave a partnership with City Council and having a voice in how that money will be used. Having said that, first, I mean, we, we really need to, to seek engagement with them to get some ideas about what is important to them. The things that I hear from them are things like maintaining downtown appearances, trash, streets, et cetera. Obviously, a strategic infrastructure reserve will be very important. And as Ben pointed out, just refilling the reserves that have been, that are being depleted this year is going to be probably upfront as one of the first priorities.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everybody. Housing. Housing experts say Vermont needs many more, many, many more housing units at all price levels. And the city has discussed using its Country Club Road property for both recreation and housing. How do you see the city moving forward with the Country Club Road project in the next three to five years? And we'll start with Jim.
Okay, this is one of the things I'm trying to bone up on. And I'm glad I didn't have to campaign because I know a lot about the old time problems, but I don't know about the new things. I would like to see, I think you really have to work with the, you know, the people who do this for a living. I mean, they're the ones that know the ins and outs. I am very much a housing advocate. I was one of the original members who created the Montpelier Housing Task Force in 1999. And I've always been a housing advocate. But there are groups we can work with, like Downstreet, who can supply expertise on the affordable units. And there are developers who can supply expertise. I don't think the city does a good job with the housing on their own. And Stonecutter's Way is a perfect example. The original vision for that was to have housing on it. And I challenge anybody to tell me where there's any housing on it. And it wasn't done because the council was not forcible enough in that. And I tried to get them to be and I didn't even get a second. So I think we have to work with partners to have this done who know more about how to do it than the city does.
Thank you. Ben?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think housing is just such an important issue. And I really believe, I know it's an aspirational statement, but I would really love to see Montpelier in the next 10 years be thought of as the most housing friendly city in the state of Vermont. And, you know, for me, Country Club Road, it's not a question of whether or not it should happen. It has to happen. It's just a question of how much can the city invest in it, given what we have, right? There's a big difference between a couple million dollars putting in infrastructure and utilities or $20 million if it involves extensive roads and things like that. And, you know, I really do believe that it's important to focus our energy on the downtown, including infill development. You know, we've got all these parking lots, areas where we could be building housing here. But I think we have to be pretty aggressive around our housing goals. Right now, in our draft city plan, it's calling for a minimum of 30 new units per year. In Rutland right now, the mayor of Rutland has set a goal of 250 units a year. Now that's an aspirational goal. Whether or not they're going to achieve it remains to be seen. But that's what they're shooting for and that's the kind of thing that we need to do as well. And I just want to be clear, it's not about the city being a housing developer. We don't have the capacity or the expertise to do that. But we do have the ability to create the conditions through which other partners, like Jim referenced, can come in and start to fill that, whether it's Vermont Housing Finance Authority, EverNorth, Downstreet, a variety of private partners. But we really need to create the system and the ecosystem in which housing can happen.
Thank you. Mark?
To, to pick up where Ben was sort of left off, I would agree that the city is not housing developers. It has to be done in conjunction with partners. But most importantly, we need to have a sense of what we want this place to look like in 10 or 20 or 50 years. And at the moment, I'm not sure that we all have a shared vision of that. For me, the focus needs to be on downtown. There are plenty of opportunities for infill projects. And especially as we recover from the flood and the state figures out what it's going to do, there are limitless opportunities for partnership to create more housing at all affordability levels downtown in a way that supports downtown businesses, broadens the tax base, et cetera. Now, the question, of course, was about Country Club Road. Like, like Jim, I'm, I don't know enough about exactly where we stand. What are the costs to move forward? What is that vision to move forward? And what are the costs to pull out if we sell it? So I'm, I'm not in a position to really state at this time what would be the right thing. What I will say is all housing is good housing. If there is a viable plan to create housing at Country Club Road at all levels of affordability and having it, have it meaningfully connected to the downtown in some way, I would love to see that plan and we should really explore that. And if there's not, then we should explore other options. Thank you.
Thank you. Palin?
So before answering the question, I just want to say that I need to be back at work. I need to leave at 12:50 here because I'm using my lunchtime. So I don't know how long I can stay. Just want to make sure. As a, yeah, professional woman, having full-time job, I don't have really flexibility during the day, 84. So for my answer, I really, I'm really happy to hear that we are all on the same page, that city is not a developer because it was one of the ideas we have been discussing at the City Council. And it is also my approach. So that's why we need to start talking to developers right away. And like this Saturday, doing my door knocking, I also talked to developers. And we have a very nice, like almost an hour meeting. And also today, before coming here, I had a meeting with a nonprofit, a local organization who builds houses in Montpelier and Vermont. So I am learning a lot from different perspectives. And as a city, we can support the initiative, but we should create opportunities for developers to come and do their job, which they are experts in it. And like, Mark called me before announcing his candidacy, which is very nice of him. And he said, I'm doing a good job. So these ideas, I just want to continue doing a good job and serving on the City Council and talking with different parts of this initiative and help City Council to support Country Club Road, but not as a developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Palin. Go ahead, Jim. Yeah, the question is.
He started.
So we've gone through all four of you.
Yeah.
Apologies. I, we have a couple more minutes before Palin has to go. And I'd like to take a break from the round robin questions and allow Mark and Palin to each ask each other, ask each other a question. We'll start with you, Palin. Go ahead and, and you'll have the same 90 seconds each to respond.
Okay, thank you for your flexibility. So last time, there was no section on this, so I really like this format. So it is very nice because I know Mark from Montpelier Alive Board. And I'm very happy that he's running. I think District Two is very lucky to have two candidates really can contribute a lot to the City Council. So I just want to ask this as a City Counselor, but also District Two resident. Since I've been working for two years and I've really served in a very critical times flood than other things. And I feel like this experience is like, like 10-year worth of experience or something. And already created very good communication with other City Counselors. We work very effectively. We start working on the strategic plan. We start working on different proposals. So how it will benefit District Two to disturb that continuation of work and just like start over?
So I think the question that I'm hearing is why would we change horses midstream, right? It's a very common question. Why would we move away from the incumbent? Honestly, I think that Palin has been, you've been very active over the past three, four weeks since the race began. And I do feel like if, if I had seen that sort of level of activity for the past three years, I might not have felt any need to get in there at all. But I think that we have, we have slightly different visions for what the city should be. And I think we have different styles, different levels of proactivity, activity and engagement and energy. And I think both of us would, would either serve or continue to serve the city very well. I just think I have a different approach. And I think that the city could use a little bit more vision, a little more proactivity and a little bit more energy and optimism, quite honestly.
Yeah, thank you. But I don't disagree. I, actually, I disagree with that. I'm not active. I've been very active. I've been organizing lots of different events, listening sessions. I've been very active. I've been organizing lots of different events, listening sessions. Yeah, so but I will take it as a feedback and I will try to be more active. And maybe you can just like, let me know, right? Just like I am open to improve our, you know, approach and communication with public.
Thank you, Helen. In the interest of time, I'm gonna ask Mark to ask you a question. You have a chance to answer, because I understand you have a work schedule.
Yeah, one o'clock meeting, yeah.
So, sure. So to first just touch on that, regardless of who is in the seat after Town Meeting Day, I'm sure that both of us are going to be very willing to work with each other and support each other for a better Montpelier, right? I certainly will support you in that. The question I have for you is, I've heard folks say, you know, Helen is getting her stride. She's been in there for three years now, and she's, she's really finding her way into the work. I feel for me, in the past year and a half of doing this sort of post-flood work, I've already sort of found a really great stride. The question I have for you is, can you point to something really concrete in Montpelier that you feel is is noticeably and really better because of an effort that you either led, spearheaded, or gathered partners to collaborate on that produced a real result? And what, what would you point to to illustrate that?
Yeah, so I am very proud of that I started and then co-hosted with Sal Alfano, my fellow city councillor, our monthly listening session. We organized over twenty-four of them every month. And every month, people, and we do like ten AM, right? And people come. If they cannot come, they email me, then I go and have, have a coffee with them same day or like other days. And I can see that they are giving lots of input that they, nobody has asked them before. So this is very important. I'm really proud of. Second thing I'm proud of, I initiated youth committee with the support of city council. And now we have five students, four from high school, one from middle school, to serve on youth committee, and they will be a part of decision-making. And I'm receiving that maybe we should consider having this youth as a non-voting part of city council members. So these are really great things to see happening, and I hope they continue to happen and thrive.
Thank you. Thank you. And I want to offer you, Mark, if you have any response, Helen had time for a response to your answer before. I know Helen is starting to look at the clock because she has a one PM.
I'll be super quick and try and get it in fifteen seconds. First of all, thank you for setting up the listening sessions. Public engagement is so important. If I'm able to, to be in the seat, I would absolutely partner with Sal to continue that work and expand that work to to include folks that maybe otherwise don't show up on a Saturday morning. Listening is very important, but asking for feedback is not always the same as listening. And listening is not always the same thing as leadership. And I think that listening is the first step, and that is really great. But at some point, we have to take what we hear and synthesize it into action. And I hope that one of us will be here doing that, and the other one will be supporting whoever that person is. Thank you very much for your service and lots of respect.
I wish I can stay more. I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
We understand. We understand. Thank you so much for being here, Helen, especially in the middle of a busy workday. Thank you. So we had intended for to move on to our deeper dive section at this point. But what I'd like to do is remind the audience that there is an opportunity for audience questions. If anybody who's here, Ed Flanagan in the back is available to take your, if you have a slip of paper, he's got pens. So
Questions for my children.
So go ahead. And while we're there's, there's one more question on my list I want to get to before we do our deeper dive. And I'll give folks, if you do have any burning questions or, or smoldering, send them up. But I'm gonna go forward with one more round robin question, and then we'll see if folks have might have some follow-up to some of what you all have talked about earlier. So in the city's latest budget survey, the city has been doing one every year that there's budgeting process. Fifty-four percent of the respondents said they do not support the current tax rate. Twenty-two percent said they do. Twenty-four percent said they aren't sure. One person in the survey commented, and this is a direct quote, "My mortgage payment increased five hundred dollars this year largely due to property taxes. My salary did not increase at all. This city is becoming completely unaffordable." That's the end of the quote. How do you see your role as a city council member to address the affordability crisis in Montpelier? And we'll start with Ben.
Yeah, I mean, that's really, that's really tough. You know, I, I think I had mentioned this actually in the question you asked at the bridge, you know, my next door neighbor gets sixteen hundred dollars a month in social security and his rent is eleven hundred dollars a month. Right? You know, he's seventy-two, seventy-two years old, and he's terrified about what happens next. I mean, that fear is real. And, you know, it's, it's, it shouldn't be the case. You know, how we address the affordability issue, there's so many things that go into it. And I think it's really important not to just be kind of simplistic about it of like, we're just gonna, you know, cut or stay right here and we're not gonna move. I mean, we have to be thinking about the relationship to the school budget, obviously to other factors that are out there in the world. But the most important thing we have to do is manage the resources that we have extremely well. That's why, to me, water infrastructure is so important, right? It's the stuff in the ground that allows everything above ground to happen. And every time, you know, on Christmas Day, I'm walking my dog and I see, you know, five Public Works employees out there fixing a water main break, like, thank you to them for doing that. But like, that costs so much from the city. And so I think, you know, there's no short-term solution here. It's long-term thinking that will get us to a place where we can be affordable, but it starts with managing the resources that we have extremely well by not being distracted and staying, you know, eyes on the prize, focused on the conditions that will make this city affordable for everyone who's here and the people who want to come here.
Thank you. I'm gonna change up our order a little bit and go next to Jim.
Okay, in my twelve years on the council, how, how did I notice this? We had four level-funded budgets. I don't think we've had a level-funded budget since. And I, nobody fought harder for the people who were in that position, because nobody on the council in my twelve years was ever as poor as I was. I was raised in a poor family. I've been poor most all my life. I cert, I was a renter. I was the only renter on the council during those years. I was the one in touch with the marginalized group more than anybody. I spoke up for them more than anybody. I saw people, I grew up in this city with, who could not remain living here, although they loved the city, because they were forced out. They didn't make the money that the people who came in had made. And so I saw a lot of them have to leave because of that. I was close to having to be that way. So I know, I have a record that I will stand on for how I fought for these people. Nobody was out among the people more than I was when I was on the council. I was, I was on seven to nine committees. I heard all kinds of things. Affordability was always a top issue. The economy and affordability is always front and center. It always was during my twelve years, and I was always cognizant of. So.
Thank you. Mark?
So, as Ben pointed out, there are no short-term solutions. There are no good short-term solutions, right? The, the answer to the affordability question here is housing. It's not something that can be done in a year or two. It may take ten or twenty years to really get there, but those, that ten or twenty years has to start at some point, and that point has to be now. And if I, I understand that as I'm out there knocking on doors with people, you're right in line with the survey. About half of the people say the number one thing for me is, is the taxes are too high. Some people don't care. Some people don't know, as you say. But there are services that we expect and deserve in Montpelier, and no one wants to pay for the services, but everyone expects the services, and therein is the rub. So there, the, the long-term answer to that is that we need more housing. More housing spreads the tax base around decreasing each person's individual share, but it also brings a resilient answer to who is going to continue to shop and raise future lot taxes, for example. Who is going to provide the economic development and revitalization of our downtown? It is more people at all affordability levels living downtown, people who work downtown and can walk home. The answers, unfortunately, are all long-term answers, and we have to start now in order for them to have, have the effect that they need to have.
Thank you. I'm gonna jump into one of those deeper dive questions here. And the, the reason is because we've brought up, and I have an infrastructure question on hold if we don't get questions from the audience, but I think we're all, it's come up a few times that there is an infrastructure crisis in the city along with an affordability crisis. And I'm not using the word crisis lightly. We know there's been about twelve water main breaks a year, and that's only the water main breaks. That's not counting leaks and other incidences. We know that paving was put on hold for an entire year for budget constraints. And that takes money to fix, which would increase the budget, which would increase property taxes. So how, the deeper dive question is, how do you see the city council finding a resolution between the need to invest in infrastructure in a major way and keeping the city affordable for the people who already live here or who may want to move here? And I've lost track of my rotation here, but I think we're starting with Mark this time.
Sure. So when we look at streets and how the, how they're, how they're paid for, there's water under there, there's sewer under there, there's gas lines, what have you. And then there's the roads and sidewalks itself. Each one of those things has its own budget, and those budgets don't line up by accident, of course. It is, I'm, I'm, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not gonna second guess the work of the very capable professionals that we have at DPW. But it is the role of city council to set the vision and priorities of what needs to be accomplished this year to collaborate with DPW on how we can complete execute, design and execute complete streets projects that allows us to replace replace infrastructure in a way that not only keeps us up to date, but also moves us towards a shared vision of where we want housing, how, how the city is going to grow and expand in different ways, and to create strategic infrastructure reserves that allows and empowers DPW to make flexible decisions as they come. And the local option sales tax is one potential source of that. Quite frankly, if it's, if we need to, if we need to, I'm sorry, I've run out of time. So I'll, I'll, I'll stop right there. I won't be I won't be able to finish in fifteen seconds. So I'll, thank you.
Jim?
Well, I, I think we need to strip down to some core services for a while. I think we need to look at where our staffing is. I got on when there was ninety-eight people, and there was a hundred and seventeen before these latest cuts. And the city population shrank in that time, and yet the city government grew. And I was always asking why. Now, I had a radical novel for tackling the city. I said, when we do a street paving, why don't we do the under the street at the same time? Because invariably, we'd lay down the top and a water break would happen. It was almost Murphy's Law. So dig up the street, do the water line, do the sewer line, do the street, mark it down that that street has been done. I was told, do we keep an inventory where things were done? It was all in Steve Gray's head. I said, you mean, we're a bus from running over him to know nothing about what's under the streets? We have computers now that can record all this stuff. So of course, nobody took me up on that, but that was a way of what Mark was talking about, coordinating the three groups, you know, for the surface and underneath it. Why not pick a street and do everything and start with your main streets? And so the whole street is done, and then we can cross it off and keep moving forward. We did this in Duxbury. We did the entire town.
Thank you, Jim. Ben?
Yeah, I really appreciate the question. You know, Montpelier has the same number of water breaks as Burlington, Vermont, which is five times our size. Right? So that tells us that there's a real crisis and that we're an outlier, and we need to figure it out. You know, one of the places that I would start is, how much do these water main breaks cost us annually? What's the average of that over the past five years? If you go and look at the DeFrain Group's preliminary engineering study on the water infrastructure in Montpelier, they don't answer that question. Right? I think that's a question we need to answer. Is how much does it cost us every time something breaks? What's the average per year? How would that compare to a more proactive solution in which we're, you know, identifying problem areas and fixing them in advance? You know, it just strikes me that if you've got a hole in your roof and it costs a hundred dollars to fix it, eighty dollars isn't gonna get the job done. You're still gonna get the damage, right? So we really need to be thinking more strategically about how we're deploying resources. I will say that, you know, as I mentioned before, I was the Assistant State Director at USDA Rural Development, which is a federal agency dedicated to the economic vitality of rural America. And part of the things that we did was finance water infrastructure, right? And we used to always say, water infrastructure is both inevitable and necessary. And if something's inevitable and necessary, the sooner you fix it, the better off you're gonna be, because things don't get cheaper.
Thank you. Bill, did you have any other deep dive questions? Because I've definitely, oh, we have a question from the audience. Awesome. Okay, great.
It looks like several.
Okay, question from the audience. What are the one or two most critical issues facing Montpelier that the council should prioritize in order to ensure the long-term livability and vibrancy of our community? We'll start with Mark.
Okay, so the I'm, I'm not sure if this is the question. Most critical, the first thing, most critical and most urgent is finding Bill's replacement in the right way and following, following existing procedures, but then also supplementing that with things that are unique to Montpelier and doing it in a way that attracts the right kind of candidate and sends a message, sends the right message to the world. The other thing is that we need to have, as a city, a unified vision of what the future of Montpelier wants to look like, so that all of our short-term decisions can be made in service of that longer term view. Otherwise, we will make short-term decisions that have less than ideal outcomes, and we won't necessarily be rowing together in the same direction towards the future that we want. I think that starts with the city master plan, which has been several years in coming. And tho, those are, those are the, the first two most urgent. Behind that, as we've already said, is strategic infrastructure choices made in service of housing, housing and more housing where we need it, because housing is ultimately going to be the long-term solution to all of our short-term woes.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I would echo some of that. I mean, we definitely, if we don't grow and if we keep shrinking, the burden becomes more and more on all of us, and we're putting financial pressure on everybody. We need to find a balance of how the money we take in and how we use it. If we don't maintain affordability to some degree, we're gonna be a city of two groups. The extremely wealthy and the heavily subsidized. There's gonna be no room for the middle, and I've seen that happening for thirty years now. The middle is constantly being forced out. So everything has to be, you know, it's the old family thing. Gotta learn to live within your means and what are your means? And so we have to look at what's coming in, what we think we can bring in beyond that without breaking that delicate balance. And then how do we employ it? Infrastructure is important. Housing growing is important to get more people to shoulder the burden. We reached out to Berlin at one time and said, become part of our water system so we can get their people on it. We didn't have any success in that. They didn't want, they thought they would be dominated by Montpelier. Other efforts, we reached out. Donna would know about these, about the police and all that. We just didn't get any positive responses, but it needs to be more community-based, working with other communities. They have the same problems.
Recording stopped. Okay.
I guess I'll stop.
Thanks, Jim. And just, just to go back to the original question, what are the one or two most critical issues facing Montpelier that the council should prioritize in order to ensure the long-term livability and vibrancy of our community? To make sure I understood what you said.
Keeping it affordable and working on the core issues and getting housing. Keeping it affordable and working on the core issues and getting housing in here.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, again, for me, it's, it's infrastructure is the most important thing that allows housing development to happen. You know, I would say really focusing that on the downtown, again, and like state parking lots and opportunities for infill development, I think is really important. You know, so those are like the, the actual tangible things that I think we need to prioritize as a council. But really as a council and a community, I honestly think the most important thing we have to do is work on the tone of our community conversations. You know, I mean, I think it's, it's, it's unfortunate that no one's running against me, right? That Jim, I mean, you seem great, but it would be nice to have a contested race, right? Why is that? I think people look at front porch forum. I think they look at social media. I think they watch city council meetings and see people really question the morality of counselors and the work that they're doing. And I just think that that kind of divisiveness and toxicity undermines our civic fabric. And so we really need to look out for each other and be positive and believe in ourselves. You know, there are communities across Vermont that have turned the curve on an unfortunate narrative, whether it's Hardwick, St. Johnsberry, Bellows Falls, St. Albans. All of these places, a decade ago, 15 years ago, there were jokes made about them. And now there are places that are on the up, they're thriving. And you know, they still have challenges. We're always going to have challenges, but they believe in themselves and that goes a long way.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? Okay, well, that's fine. I've got questions. I got plenty of questions. All right, well, feel free to revise your questions and send it up in a minute if you want. So one topic we haven't touched on yet is homelessness. And the, I think the statewide count last year found a three, or yeah, the end of last year, found a 312% increase in the number of people who were found to be living without shelter or homeless in some form, 312% increase year over year. And, and we're certainly seeing that in our city in a real way. My question for you three is what can the city do to address homelessness in Montpelier? And I have frankly, lost track of the order entirely. Are we starting with Ben? Did we start with you last time? Okay, so it's, let's start with Ben.
Yeah, you know, I have to say, I think this is actually, this might be the hardest question that we're going to have today. You know, like in all the people that I've met during this campaign or knocking on doors and talking to people, this is the thing, that it is really, really tough and intractable. And you know, Montpelier is one part of a statewide challenge, a national challenge. And I really want to commend the people, you know, like Good Sam, the folks at the Unitarian Church who are doing the overnight shelter, you know? But I mean, it's terrifying, right? When you think about, you know, hundreds of people over the course of this winter, taking advantage of the overnight warming shelter. And it's being staffed by volunteers, many of whom don't have training or the capacity to deal with really challenging situations. I don't think there's an easy answer. You know, this is another one of those things where I don't know what I don't know. I'm going to listen. But I would also take a community development approach of a collective impact model, right? That says, no one entity is going to fix this challenge, right? But we all have a responsibility and a part to play. And so I would look to make sure that Montpelier is doing its part and collaborating with regionally, I think definitely, this is a regional thing. But really trying to serve as a convener, a collaborator, to bring people to the table to look for, for action-oriented solutions. But it's a real challenge one. And I don't want to be Pollyannaish. It's, it's going to be really hard.
Mark?
Yes, the, the risk of sounding dire about it. I don't think that homelessness itself is a problem that has a solution. Because the, the underlying causes of homelessness are so varied and so individual. And they are systemic. As Ben says, it's certainly not going to be the city that comes in and fixes homelessness. It is going to require a lot of partnership and a lot of collaboration just to be able to maintain the symptoms of homelessness. But it is, it's not something that we're going to be able to easily solve through policy or even magic money. That there is no simple answer like that. What I can say is that the residents of Montpelier deserve to feel safe. And the unhoused in Montpelier are human beings and their dignity must be respected. And whatever approach the city takes has to address the fundamental dignity and human needs of everybody who lives here, whether we're property owners or whether we're unhoused people. At the moment, I'm not really sure what the city's plan is or solution. We are just seeing the results and the symptoms of the unhoused crisis that we're experiencing as a nation.
Hardest question, definitely. This isn't just even a regional thing. This is a state problem. This is a country problem. Just like I had the most experience being poor, I'm going to say something that most people don't know about me. At 18 years of age, the day after my 18th birthday, my father said, get the F out of my house. We were at odds, both of us, and there was no warning. I spent two years and four months on the streets. And I'm not talking the streets of Montpelier. Because I didn't want to stay in the streets where I would run into my father. And I can tell you this, I was among a lot of the homeless. I lived downtown among them. One of the problems the homeless have is they've lost their sense of pride. They've lost their sense of self-worth. I would say if we're going to house them in a place overnight, they need to do something to add to that, like clean it up a little, help, do, require something of them other than being sober. Try to develop some self-worth and pride in them. Because if they get dependent on you, they're not going to ever get out of this. And I got myself out of it. And I know that you need a little help sometimes, but we need to get them moving out of it or it's always going to be with us. It's not going to snuff.
I'm going to do a deeper dive. We've talked about having our deeper dive here. And I wanted to dive a little deeper into this question and ask each of you. We've talked about sort of the generic problem and given credit that is very much due to the folks who are in this, right in the trenches with it. But what do you see as something, the municipal, if you could say, take one thing, the city of Montpelier, I don't mean the churches or Good Sam or other folk. I mean, the actual city of Montpelier. What is one thing that you think the city of Montpelier could, could change or do that in some way, no matter how small or large, addresses the, the issue of homelessness in, in our region? And we'll start with Jim this time.
Well, I think for one thing, I'm hearing that, you know, there's a toilet issue. So, and I think another thing, I asked Shaw's people, why, you know, you're looking for people? What about the homeless? They said, well, you know, they're not showered, they're not presentable. So maybe a place where they can shower and be presentable while they're getting, getting a job and working at it to kind of work themselves out of homelessness. We all need light privacy in the bathroom. So one of my first questions is, why have we not solved this, you know, toilet issue? Which seems not a really big thing. I think, like I said, if we have a shelter we establish, we need to require them to say, hey, help us out in some way. I don't care if you go out in the streets and pick up trash. Start being a productive member of society. Don't just expect a handout to you. You know, we want to, like I said, develop some pride with them, some self-worth. That's how people climb out of holes. If they don't get that, they just sink further. Being downtown among them, boy, I saw the problems. Every day I went out on the street, I had to go through them in my face and they never picked up any of their stuff. I tried to say, why couldn't you go up to the basket there 30 feet away and put your stuff in it? They didn't want to. Well, we need to say, you want some help? Yeah, help us out too. So.
Thanks, Jim. Ben, what, what do you see as, as an action the city could do or improve on that would address the situation?
Yeah, I think that there's potentially a role for the city to play on better coordination of existing services, right? Of like taking a leadership role and, you know, I know we have the homelessness task force. And, you know, I know that folks are working on it, but really pulling folks together that are engaging with the unhoused and trying to better coordinate their services. Whether that's making sure that the people that are volunteering for the overnight shelter have access to training and resources that they need to be able to do it safely. Or, you know, I think the faith community has done this, a really good job on this with like the meal programs, right? And coordinating, but I think we could do more of that kind of work. And I think the city could at least initially take a, a leading role on, on trying to do that. You know, one of the things that I find fascinating is just the number of physical spaces, right? That are potentially at play in downtown Montpelier, really as a result of the flood. But you know, what we really need more of is not just physical space for people to be, but the services that can help them kind of get out of this cycle. But then on a real practical level, I also just want to say like, we, we need to have toilets, right? We need to have places, we need to have lockers, we need to have places where people can shower, right? That is just a kind of basic human dignity thing. And we should be able to figure that out. It's not that complicated.
Thank you. Mark?
I, I wish I didn't, wasn't after Ben, because he's taking away answers every, all the, all the time. But offering services is super important, but the answer is going to have to be partners, partners and partners, because the city is not in a position to build and maintain a facility. We're having a hard time just maintaining the facilities that we already rely on. Having said that, we, folks do need these services. And I think that Ben touched on this a little bit, but at the moment, I'm not sure where there is a place for people to go. It seems that everywhere that homeless folks wind up becomes a hotbed of controversy about how can we not have these people here? And I don't know where the right place is in town. But there, there needs to be a place that people can go and feel safe, even if they don't have a permanent structure for a home. They, they do need access to bathrooms and, and services, showers, et cetera. So it's a very complicated answer. But I think that, I mean, sorry, very complicated question. I think the answer is in multiple partnerships, convening those, those services that are already existing through nonprofit and faith-based groups and trying to pull, pull something together as a whole community and not view it as something that the city alone should, should be able to handle. We, we're not in a position to do that alone.
Thank you. And I'm just realizing we are just about at time for today's forum. I'm going to give you each an opportunity to make a closing statement. And we'll just go around the way we have and starting with Mark.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody for coming. Cassandra Rotary Club, thank you for, both of you for running. And for everyone who is currently and has ever been on council for serving, we really need you in that regard. I'm running for city council in District Two, because I am a doer and I am a problem solver. When, when I, I see that there is something that can be done better. For instance, after the flooding, that the community could use a better emergency plan. I find partners and bring people together to work on those solutions. So case in point, we have the Montpelier Action Plan for Local Emergency, which is by no means finished yet, but it is well on its way to being adopted and revised. Through doing that, we realize what we really need in town to do a lot of that lifting is tighter community connections, neighbor-to-neighbor connections. And so right now we're working on Montpelier Neighbor Net, which is designed to do just that. Find organically grown neighbor-to-neighbor connections and organize them. But what city council needs and what I hope to bring with my voice to city council is a well-articulated vision for what Montpelier wants to look like in 10, 20, 50 years as the place that our kids will grow, come back to, then make smart infrastructure decisions in service of the growth where and the types of growth that we want to see in service of that long-term vision.
Thank you. Jim?
First, I want to take this opportunity to thank you and the Rotary and Orca for putting this together. I didn't do that in the beginning. I thought I'd save it in my closing statements, because a lot of people know a lot about me already. I also want to say, I am highly impressed with the other three people who are here. I met, I am going to be going on a council before I met some of them. The other five, I never knew before, just recently. I knew Jack and that was it. And I'm very impressed with the three counselors I have met. I'm very impressed with Mark. I see some, boy, some great, I didn't see this kind of really thinking on the council that councils that I was on. And I, I appreciate you both wanting to run for this city. And I look forward to working with whoever is going to be working with me. And so I feel hopeful. I feel I found that I still have the passion. I've been watching all the Zoom meetings and everything. I've been trying to catch myself up to speed. I also, I already know some of the committees I want to sit on. I want to be the council liaison to the senior center. They don't have one. I was just over there for two and a half hours talking to them about it. And I used to be there. So I just want to say thank you to also the audience who came here to listen to us.
Thank you, Jim. Ben, your closing remarks?
Yeah, first, I just want to thank my wife and my kids for being here and for allowing me to run for council, probably against their better judgment. But I just want to say, you know, I feel like I know what it takes for a community like ours to thrive. I really believe that it comes down to collaborative visionary leadership and relentless optimism. I feel like I have both of those. You know, in my professional career, I've been blessed to be able to work across Vermont, literally from Vernon to Canaan, Pownell to Alberg. I've been in those communities. I've seen what success looks like. And I think when people line up behind good ideas and action, there's, there's nothing we can't do. You know, and I never frankly envisioned running for city council. I, after the flood, I just felt like I do a lot of this work kind of out in the state. And I just felt like my town, the city that I love was at risk. And I, you know, I raised my hand to co-chair the Montpelier Commission for Recovery and Resilience. And, you know, I was frankly terrified to do that, to put myself out there like that. And I have to say, serving with Mark and with other people on that commission has been one of the most inspiring things I've ever done. And it's inspired me to want to give back even more. And I feel like we have a lot of work to do in this city. But we have the people and the imagination and the goodwill here to get it done. And I look forward to rolling up the sleeves and digging in. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to everybody who's here. We're closing out the forum at this time. I just want to remind anybody who's watching that voting for city council and many other items on the ballot is happening on Town Meeting Day, March 4th, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM here in City Hall. There is handicap accessible voting at the police station behind City Hall and early voting. You need to be in touch with the town clerk about that. The best way to protect our democracy is to vote. You can also participate in city council meetings. They are public. You can Zoom, go virtually or in person. Thank you also to Donna Bate. Donna, is it Debate speaking?
Yes.
Yes. We appreciate Donna as our timekeeper and the Montpelier Rotary Club.